Okay, it is 7:30 according to my clock here. So I will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council from Monday, June 17th, 2019. And I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we enter into the summer season, we are thankful for the many gifts and support that we see throughout our community, especially in our downtown business district. And we are excited to see all the plantings and all the art and all the new ideas of art, artistic design that are being incorporated throughout the downtown area. And we're ever thankful that we have such a talented and vibrant downtown to which we proudly call home. We also want tonight to remember all those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each one of these men and women as they go about their vital mission of defending our liberty. As always tonight, we want to ask for guidance and vision and understanding and direction as we act on the various items before us on the agenda. And in truth, knowing that in our hearts and minds, each of us is here to do what we feel is in the best interest of our community. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Serrone, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, the City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Miller?
Here.
Rosato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serrone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all 14 elected aldermen are present in accounting force. We have the necessary qualms to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, the reminder that we ask each of you to please use the microphone during the meeting if you're speaking so that it can be picked up and clearly broadcast on TV. And going to item five, are there any items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's event agenda from anybody on the City Council? Okay, moving then to item six, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Chanset, do you have this?
I do. The consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file the committee of whole minutes for May 21st, 2019, plan commission minutes for May 1st, 2019, 2018 post issuance compliance report, and the April 2019 financial report. Approvals, the June 14, 2019 payroll in the amount of $910,061.11. The accounts payable register, check register for $1,457,657.78. City council minutes for June 3rd, 2019. For approval, Class F liquor license application for Windmill City Festival by the Park District as applicant. Resolution 19-73-R authorizing Per Tano Construction Company to install a duct bank for 15KV underground circuit upgrade at 1998 McKee Street for Raising Cane and at 1425 and 1475 Nagel Boulevard for new development in an amount not to exceed $80,043, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Your honor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of the consent agenda and the acceptance of the items to be placed on file. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item number seven, matters from the public for items that are not on our agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? All right. Moving to item number eight, which is a report from Batavia Main Street, and the Executive Director, Chris Faber, is here. And Chris, welcome.
Hello, thank you. I'm going to be briefed tonight because I brought a friend who would like to share some information with you about a project we're partnering on together. But just want to mention, we've kind of had our official kickoff of our major public events, starting off June 1st with the Well Batavia event and the opening of the farmer's market. A few thousand people attended that Saturday morning. We filled River Street nicely, all the way from Wilson down to Spring Street, with kind of two different events running simultaneously. The Well Batavia event was a huge success. I think they doubled the number of people. Yeah, no? Doubled the number of people who visited the Fitness Village and did the medical.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that was... So, by all rights, everything went excellent for that. We also have had a pretty good start to our second Friday's events that we do in the warm weather months. Just this past Friday was a big one. We threw a pop-up craft market on River Street Friday night, very well attended, right up until the rain started. There was also the big Flag Day event over here, which was not a Main Street thing, but we did some cross-promotion, ran in a conjunction that went very well, too. So, nice to see people out and about around town on a beautiful Friday night prior to the rain. Coming up for us, cocktails in the park, July 20th. Tickets on sale for that, they've been selling pretty well so far, but definitely plenty of seats available, so you can go to downtownbatavia.com to check that out. Dinner table scheduled for August 4th. Tickets are sold out for that one, but we look forward to having all 200 and some people who have bought tickets and will be attending that night. And then I want to talk about a project called Activate the Alley, which is something that we started planning, I think, January, kind of a little collaboration between Main Street and Water Street and some other people in town. And I've been sitting for the past few months waiting for some grant funding, which has now come in, so I asked Dani to come over and join us tonight and talk more about that because she's much more dialed into the details than I am. Before I do that, any questions for me?
Where'd the grant funding come from?
I'll let her. I don't want to steal her thunder.
That's a rare report in these days.
She's good at hunting that stuff down. All right.
Hi, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Awesome.
Good. I see a couple new faces, so I'm Dani Hollis. I'm the Executive Director of Water Street Studios. I sent around a couple documents just about our organization, but also about the Activate the Alley project. It's a little bit dense in text, and that's purposeful. There's a lot going on with this project. Kristen mentioned that we've been working on this since January, and we did that through some strategic partnerships, but this has been an ongoing project for about a year and a half, to figure out how we get public art in downtown Batavia. There's some of it, but how do we get more of it? And how do we do that? By supporting our nonprofit art center, Water Street Studios, but also lifting up the many important nonprofit organizations that are in the Fox Valley area that serve Batavia, but also serve, again, the greater Fox Valley area. So, we came up with this clever idea to partner up 10 nonprofits with 10 artists to create murals that illustrate the programs and services that those nonprofits offer back to the community. So it's our way of using the arts as a tool for personal, professional, economic, and academic growth, and doing some cause marketing and matching up brand with mission and saying, okay, if you need to get more awareness about the services that you provide to the Batavia area, how do we do it in a way that's accessible, that boosts our aesthetic in downtown, and serves a whole handful of different things that are illustrated in great detail in that document for you? And I'm very happy to announce that we have been funded for this project for $20,000 by the community foundation, so that we can have creative placemaking, projects happen, things like benches, tables, string lighting, things that people are attracted to that will get them walking downtown, but then also fund the project supplies for those mural projects. So, we will be doing replications of original pieces of artwork, again, these murals, and the nonprofits will keep those murals on site that they can do with what they please. Maybe they're going to auction it at a gala to recoup the cost of their participation fee, but we're also going to give them the high-res image of that mural so that they can use it for whatever they need. Maybe some swag materials, you know, t-shirts, posters, thank you letters, maybe it's a cool poster that they give to their, you know, major donors and things like that. So we want them to use it for whatever they need to use it, but the whole point is to be able to start getting it into people's minds that you can use the arts as a tool for, you know, furthering your mission and using it for things like economic restructuring, community development, things like that. So, we're going to pilot this program on Water Street, and we're going to do a ride in the alley. If you look at your document there, there's a picture of those 10 spots that are located leading up to the entrance of Water Street. Each one of those spaces, I've got seven out of 10 of those spaces already secured with nonprofits, people like Mutual Ground, Casa King County, Anderson Animal Shelter, these kind of heavy hitters in our community. This means that those organizations and their stakeholders are coming downtown to have a reveal party, which will do a ribbon cutting with the chamber and all those good things, but those are, those are people who are attracting, I mean, hundreds of people to their organization that will now have a reason to come to Batavia. And now there's 10 of them, right? So we expect this to be a tourist attraction. We expect this to be something that will be replicated in many different ways, hopefully in downtown Batavia, but also all throughout the Fox Valley. This is something we're noticing that is, many, many different towns are finding value in it. It's a very easy sell, and it's a way where we're funding the arts here at Water Street as a fundraiser, but we've also got $20,000 in grant funding support from our local community foundation, and these nonprofits are investing $3,000 each in having a mural on site because they see the value of it. So, I will leave it to you guys. I think the question should be not, you know, if and whether we should have art downtown. I think it's what kind and where we want that art downtown, because we can use that to develop plans for things like economic restructuring, community development, things like that. So, we'll do this pilot program. I'm happy to report back once we've have it, you know, once it's all kind of worked out and we do all these ribbon cuttings and things like that. So, I'm very excited to have this in downtown Batavia. I think you all should be excited, too. And if you have any questions about how we did this or how we kind of replicate this model, I'm happy to make that information available. I think our information's on the documents I gave you, but if not, I'm easy to find, so I'll open up for questions, I think, at this time.
I would just begin by saying, I think it's a fantastic idea. I appreciate all the thought and, you know, innovative design that you've put into this thing.
Thank you.
I think it's going to be a real eye catcher and will bring a lot of people down there. Do we have a date for this ribbon cutting?
They're going to happen throughout a year's time, so the idea is every month, or, you know, maybe, maybe not in December because of holidays and things like that, but ideally every month we'll have a ribbon cutting. And one of the things that Water Street is offering in return for this kind of partnership is we will host a free event at Water Street for that organization, so that their donors, stakeholders, program participants get to have a party at, you know, in our award-winning gallery. So it will be attracting people all throughout the year, and there'll be organizations like Mutual Ground who are going to attract, you know, a good 100, 150 people to that event. Yeah, so...
You don't know what the dates are yet, and they're yet to be determined?
Uh, yeah, anytime between October 2019 to August of 2020.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And they're going to be staged as they, when their mural gets ready, then you have the ribbon cutting or whatever?
Yep. Yeah.
Any other comments from the council?
So I'm going to need to schedule with you, Mayor. We'll have to have you there. Yeah, make sure you're there.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do, too.
I think we have a downtown substation that has some really nice panel areas on it. That would be a nice place to do some of that.
I mean, do you have any ideas? Is there anything we, the city, could do there along the street or anything, or?
Absolutely. Yeah. Absolutely. I have plenty of ideas for you, Mayor. Yeah. And I've talked to some of your people, and we will make sure that some of those things can happen.
Dust off the streets, Kate.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I'd say it's thinking out of the box. It's very innovative, and I think it's fantastic that you're bringing these, you know, mutual ground and like into it. Excellent work.
Thank you. I should say, this is also raising $20,000 for Water Street Studios, the way that we have it set up as well. So it's, we're about to celebrate our 10-year anniversary, September 13th. I hope you all can join us. I'll make sure each one of you gets an invitation. But this is a way of saying, okay, we want to sustain and keep, the community has told us over and over and over again that they want us to stay and that they want to keep investing in us. So this is a very powerful way for our nonprofit partners to invest in us. And yeah, set the ground for future investment, which is, is great.
Well, one last comment. I'd say, you know, we appreciate it, because as you, you know, the city has always supported the odds here in Batavia with what we did on Wilson Street Bridge and all what we've given to Water Street Studios itself. So, thank you for your payback.
Yeah. I will make it very easy for you guys to make sure that there's public art in town. And I think, yeah, I think there's a lot of future partnerships, and Laura and I have talked at length, and the mayor and I have talked about some different options, so I'm hoping to get our alderman involved as well, and she's already been involved since the start, but making sure that we are meeting the city where they're at with what, you know, what your goals are. And I've looked at the strategic plan, too, and I think there's some opportunities to use the arts as a tool to, to help further some of those goals and meet some of those objectives, so we can get creative and think a little bit more outside of the box to make that happen and hopefully make some money, you know, through it all. So, yeah. Any other questions?
You know, I just note that Beck came and talked to me last week, I guess it was, about ideas, trying to pick my childhood memory when we had boo-boo days in town.
Good, yeah.
And what different spots in downtown were utilized for various things. You know, after she left, it occurred to me that the downtown Batavia, certainly with what we've added on River Street and now Houston Street, Houston Street back in boo-boo days, days didn't even exist. I mean, there was water out there. But, I mean, we really have put a, kind of a moving target or a moving festivities landmark on this downtown, and it's, it's moving around, you know, whether it's Oktoberfest or Windmill City Days, or Party in the Park, or Dinner in the Street, or whatever. I mean, it's, it's all the different areas that have really been, I don't know if I can think of another town in the area that has this great viability and visibility of moving activities around. There's so many different areas in its downtown. And I mean, I think that may be something that, as a community, we should probably accentuate and celebrate, that, because there aren't many around that can say they've got, I don't know what this is, a dozen different festivities at different points of the downtown area.
Yeah. It's surely something to invest in and to have city support on, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I think there's a couple that we haven't paid much attention to. Certainly one of them that jumps out at me is Island Park down there, south of the bridge, where, you know, that was built in 1932 by the Civilian Conservation Corps, and it's been restored a couple times around, but there's some pretty interesting sites down there that you could do some type of festivities on, too. So, I mean, there's just a lot of different places that we could stage a lot of different activities, so...
Sure. And we're happy to take on the artistic aspect of things, and I think you've got a real asset in Main Street to make those things happen as well. And I think, understanding where the, you know, city wants to help partner on those things would be really helpful to us, so we can meet you.
Okay.
You know where you're at on that. That sounds great.
Yeah. Alderman Chanset?
Yeah, you said you had a couple of slots opened, as the mayor says, you're on TV right now. How, if someone who knows a nonprofit that wants it, unless, how do they get a hold of you?
You can call me at Water Street Studios, 630-761-9977. The best way to get ahold of me is probably through email, so my email is Danielle, D-A-N-I-E-L-L-E, at WaterStreetStudios, with an S, dot org. Yeah, and happy to, you know, we are juring nonprofits. There's, there's a lot of people who are interested in it, and we need to make sure that those nonprofits understand what it means to partner with us and understand the value in it and the commitment to that. But again, it's an incredible marketing and promotion opportunity, and for some of those nonprofits who are operating at the $500,000 and above, it's very reasonable to spend your, spend your marketing and promotion funds on that, especially if you're looking to target Batavia, which, by the way, I've been talking with, you know, 10, 20 different nonprofit organizations. A lot of people are focusing on Batavia right now. You guys are on the, on the radar for target marketing, and I think now is the time to, you know, use whatever assets we have to make sure that those services are provided to the people in our community. And coming up with creative ways to make those resources available are very important. One example that I like to use is Mutual Ground is committed to one of our mural sites, and one of the reasons that they're committed to it is because there are some people who need the services that Mutual Ground offers if they're in an abusive domestic relationship or any, anything of the sort. You can't really bring home a flyer, right? You can't necessarily look it up on your computer. You can take a picture of a mural that just so happens to have that information at the bottom of it, right? So this is more so an outdoor resource gallery for individuals who need any sort of assistance in our community, right? And this ranges from, again, I listed some of the nonprofits that we're going to try and partner with, but, you know, Fox Valley Special Recreation Association, Fox Valley Food for Health, Mutual Ground, Casa, I mean, these are the heavy hitters, right? These are the services that people need access to. So it's, it's very excited that they have a way of getting that information in a way that maybe they couldn't have before, in using the arts to do that. I've taken up a lot of time. Any other questions? If you guys do have questions that are on your own, please feel free to contact me. My information is in those documents. You can find me on my bike in town over at Water Street Studios as well. So thank you all so much, and, you know, I hope that we have our city's support as we continue to move this pilot program to more downtown, but also further out in the Fox Valley, representing Water Street as a whole in the area. So, thank you.
Well, fun and festivities ahead. Thank you for your...
Yeah, perfect. Good. Thank you.
Okay, moving to item nine, is the reappointment of Carolyn Burnham and Andrew Greenhagen to the Batavia Environmental Commission. I'd ask for a motion of confirmation of that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Now, moving to 11, which is the appointment of Susan Stark to the Batavia Plan Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, and she is being appointed to fill a position that's been created by the vacancy of William McGrail, who was living, was on the Plan Commission but has moved out of town. So, I would note that it's been my long-serving policy that we try to have at least one citizen from each one of the four quadrants of town on the Plan Commission. And the northeast side has been one of the more challenging ones, for whatever reason, to find somebody, and so this person became available.
Who is this? I'm not familiar. Very quiet. I would hope she'd be here today, so we could, you know, question her a little bit before we...
It is to say she has a lot of opinions about the City Council and the community and all of us.
As long as she's not afraid to speak her mind.
I don't think we have enough time.
No.
So I would ask for a motion for approval of the confirmation of her...
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Kirk call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Present.
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, now we're going to go to 12, which is a public hearing on the jurisdictional boundary line agreement with the village of Sugar Grove. And convene the public hearing, and Scott, you going to handle this?
Sure, I can. This is the boundary agreement amendment for, with the village of Sugar Grove. We have an existing boundary agreement, but it's going to expire in a couple of years. We've had some negotiations with North Aurora, and as part of that, we got into some discussions with Sugar Grove about renewing and extending our current boundary agreement. And as part of that, one of the things we did was shift the line from the Lake Run Creek, essentially, to west to Bliss Road, and that matches more of what Sugar Grove's plans are, as well as what North Aurora is looking for as the final line there. So, so this would be the agreement that would shift that line and then extend it for another 20 years. Sugar Grove did approve this at their meeting on May 21st already, so they have already approved it in the form that's in front of you tonight.
Okay, any questions from the council about this? How to entertain a motion for the approval of the...
Close the public hearing. I move we close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we need a motion and a second then for the approval of the authorization of the boundary line agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Callahan, second by Alderman Knop, for the approval of the Sugar Grove boundary line agreement. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll. Okay, any questions from the council about this? How did it entertain a motion for the approval of the
Close the public hearing. I move we close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we need a motion and second then for the approval of the authorization of the boundary line agreement.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Callahan, second by Alderman Knopp, for the approval of the Sugar Grove boundary line agreement. Any further discussion? Kirk called the roll.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knopp.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knopp.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no no's, none absent. Okay, now we're going to go to twelve, which is a public hearing on the jurisdictional boundary line agreement with the village of Sugar Grove. And convene the public hearing, and Scott, you going to handle this?
Sure, I can. This is the boundary agreement amendment for, with the village of Sugar Grove. We have an existing boundary agreement, but it's going to expire in a couple of years. We've had some negotiations with North Aurora, and then as part of that, we got into some discussions with Sugar Grove about renewing and extending our current boundary agreement. And as part of that, one of the things we did was shift the line from the Lake Run Creek, essentially, to west to Bliss Road, and that matches more of what Sugar Grove's plans are, as well as what North Aurora is looking for as the final line there. So this would be the agreement that would shift that line and then extend it for another twenty years. Sugar Grove did approve this at their meeting on May 21st already, so they have already approved it in the form that's in front of you tonight.
Okay, any questions from the council about this? How did it entertain a motion for the approval of the
Close the public hearing. I move we close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we need a motion and second then for the approval of the authorization of the boundary line agreement.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Callahan, second by Alderman Knopp, for the approval of the Sugar Grove boundary line agreement. Any further discussion? Kirk called the roll.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knopp.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no no's, none absent. That was pretty flawless.
Thanks. Try.
Okay, moving to fourteen. I'm honored tonight to introduce Scott Corbin, who is the president of the Jank Guitar Store and Company, and he's here to introduce his ambassador, Madeline Schuster, who's from Batavia, who just went on a trip to France as part of this. So Scott, could you come up and tell the aldermen about this, and then maybe introduce Madeline, and she's going to talk to us for a moment?
Hi, everyone. It's good to see you again. Some new faces. I'm Scott Corbin from the Jank Guitar Store in St. Charles. I grew up here in St. Charles in the Tri-Cities, and we started a program for the youth a few years back with the St. Charles Park District and Mayor Ogina. It was a youth ambassadorship program for St. Charles, and then we actually expanded to the Tri-Cities last year. And so I'm very happy to announce that our ambassador, who goes to Batavia High School, just got back from France on her first trip abroad. So I was going to give you a little bit of an update on the program itself as the Tri-Cities Youth Ambassadorship Program, and then I'll have Madeline come up and say hi to you as well, too. And I just want to say again, thank you Mayor Shelkey for being at our ceremony. We really sincerely appreciate it, and it's wonderful to always have you there, so thank you. And so I'll give you a little bit of an update on the program. So, good evening, council members. Thank you for your time to address you today. I'm here to share important news regarding our community at large and local youth in particular. This pertains to expanding the Tri-Cities' reputation as a top family destination to an international audience, as well as establishing the Tri-Cities as a global tech hub. After years of consideration, it is my distinct pleasure and honor to share that we've been granted the opportunity to enter into a cultural cooperation with the municipality of Saint Malo, France, one of the most prestigious, elegant, and historically rich places on the planet. The basis of this cultural cooperation and the link between the communities is the Tri-Cities' Jank Ambassador Global Citizen Exchange Initiative and the development of a live listening technology called Live 2020 that will improve the sonic quality and health impact of the live listening experience for audiences around the world. The Jank Guitar Store has been proudly involved in the development of this technology, which began in 1998, and will officially launch to the public in December 2020. Internships and extracurricular tech learning opportunities for students in Saint Malo and the Tri-Cities will become available through Live 2020. In addition, the Tri-Cities' Jank Ambassador Program is expanding in 2020 to include ambassadors from Saint Malo and in the Tri-Cities in alternating years. The Jank Guitar Store held a ceremony on March 23rd of this year in Paris, France, with the official cooperation and support from the city of Paris to celebrate the winner of the Road Song Challenge Europe and announce the expansion of the Tri-Cities' Jank Ambassadorship and Global Citizen Program to France. There was an official announcement through major media outlets that designates the Tri-Cities and Saint Malo as the two main centers of development for Live 2020, as well as the Tri-Cities' Jank Ambassador Global Citizen Program. In addition to the economic benefits of global recognition, job creation, and skilled tech learning opportunities for students, the local youth selected each year to be the Tri-Cities' Jank Ambassador will be given the opportunity to visit Saint Malo for American ambassadors and for the Tri-Cities for French ambassadors, as part of the Global Citizen Initiative sponsored by the Jank Guitar Store. The Global Citizen Trip to Saint Malo was originally slated to begin in the year two of this Tri-Cities' Jank Ambassadorship. Out of respect for familial concerns about the safety of international travel, the trip was ultimately postponed to year three. Safety and comfort are always our top priorities, and we consider them absolute prerequisites for a positive, enjoyable, and impactful travel abroad experience. So in March of this year, the Third Annual Tri-Cities' Jank Ambassador embarked on the first-ever Global Citizen Trip to Saint Malo. The program was a huge success. Madeline, our Batavia High School ambassador, met with the Delegate for International Relations in the European Union in order to learn about government. She met with the Delegate for Education to learn about the school system, which included an exchange at a local high school, and met with the Delegate for Cultural Affairs in order to learn about the incredible 2,000-year history of Saint Malo. She also met with the Youth Ambassadors of Saint Malo and attended an international theater festival for students. While this was the first trip abroad, the ambassadorship, which rewards student achievements in art, leadership, and technology, is now entering its fourth year. In year one, the ambassadorship was launched in St. Charles and was awarded to George Ressinger. Year two, the ambassadorship expanded to the Tri-Cities and was awarded to Crystal Cotban. Year three, the ambassadorship was awarded to our recent ambassador, Madeline Schuster, who just returned from the inaugural Global Citizen Trip, and year four just began on June 12th. The next Tri-Cities' Jank Ambassador was just announced in a ceremony on June 12th in Lincoln Park in St. Charles, and his name is Joseph Maldonado. He's a St. Charles East student. And overall, we celebrated the outstanding students who were nominated for this year's ambassadorship and who will represent the Tri-Cities at home and abroad. We were very fortunate, because despite the bad weather, in the rain that we had that day, we still had a great turnout. And again, I just want to say thank you, Mayor. And I will be happy to answer a few questions about the program itself. If there are no questions, I'd like to then, of course, invite Madeline up to say hi to you. She's the outgoing ambassador, and she's also going to be going to DePaul this fall, so she's also graduated. So is there any questions about the program itself that I'd be happy to answer? All righty. Well, I'd like to invite Madeline up to say hi to you all. She just had a great experience in France, and like I mentioned, we will also be having the French ambassadors come to visit the Tri-Cities in future years.
Well, welcome, Madeline. We're very proud of your accomplishments.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to share a few highlights of my experiences as Jank Ambassador. As you may or may not know, the role of the Jank Ambassador is to spread goodwill throughout the community and the world through arts and different cultures. This past year, I continued to work with Water Street Studios in Batavia as an assistant teacher for elementary school art classes. Jank provided me with an opportunity to work with costume designers and directors at Steel Beam Theater in St. Charles, and I continued to improve my skills and knowledge in art at Batavia High School and support the National Art Society with their many activities. Additionally, there are opportunities for me to interact with government officials in the Tri-City area and learn about how local governments in our country work. This information was helpful when I traveled to France and learned about the local government in Saint Malo. I showed you what life was like here in the Tri-Cities and learned a great deal about life in Saint Malo. I'm very thankful for Scott Corbin and the Jank Guitar Store for providing me with this incredible opportunity to learn more about my community and the Saint Malo community and grow as an individual personally and professionally. I have a great appreciation for both, and I hope to continue to share what I learned with everyone I meet, and I hope that the new Jank Ambassador, Joseph, has just as amazing experience as I did. I will open it up to any questions, and thank you very much for your time.
Alderman.
What was your favorite experience over there?
I love the food. I love the diversity, and I just, everything about it was amazing. The city of Saint Malo is beautiful, and it's a very beautiful port city.
Anybody else?
How did you get to win this honor?
Oh, win it? Or?
How were you selected?
Oh, yeah, how was I selected? Um, yeah, yeah, you can do that.
Thank you for asking, and that was a great speech, by the way. So actually, we have candidates that are submitted by way of the teachers, the administration at the schools, as well as peers, coaches, anybody in the community, other than students themselves can nominate any one of the youths in the Tri-Cities. This year, we just had over 570 applicants, and then there's a jury comprised of representatives from all three cities. That includes local government leaders, as well as business leaders, as well as school principals and park district representatives. And then they look at the candidates every year and they make their selection. Great question. Thank you.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, I think it was a very thorough process that Madeline participated in, and I'm very proud of her that she emerged as the top candidate. It certainly speaks well for our community and the young people within Batavia that we've got such talented young people here that can win a contest like this. So look forward to many great things from her in future days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving to fifteen, which is another presentation on the Year of Mark Twain in Batavia, and we're very honored to have the Executive Director of the Batavia Library and the person of George Sheets.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this is the Year of Mark Twain in Batavia, and as you may recall, not everyone welcomes the new members. I'm George Sheets, the Director of the Batavia Public Library, and I've been and President of Batavia since December of 2004, and just have fallen in love with this community. I'm very happy to have the role I have in it. And I also fell in love with local history, and I'm no competition for Mayor Shelkey, but I certainly enjoy learning more and more about our past. And as in the process of that, I realized or discovered or reaffirmed that Mark Twain visited Batavia in January of 1869 and gave a lecture here, and it seemed appropriate to honor him with a year-long series of events and celebrations. So I gave everyone a little mini Mark. That's what we call him. If you remember Flat Stanley from your school days, this is the Mark Twain version of Flat Stanley, and please take him on your travels to your offices, take photographs and selfies, and when you post them on any of the social media, use the hashtag that's on his leg and share him with the world. And if you search that hashtag on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter and maybe even Pinterest, you'll find some very interesting photographs already appearing there. So I also gave you a flyer for, Mark Twain is actually coming back to Batavia in September, so the tickets are now on sale at the Batavia Fine Arts Center for this event, and there'll be a nice event beforehand at the Batavia Depot Museum called Cocktails with Clemens. And we are, the library's foundation and the Batavia Historical Society are collaborating on this event, which will support both the foundation and the Batavia Depot Museum Expansion Project. So for the community, I'm going to share some of the remarks that I handed out to you, so you can take them home with you. In November 1868, Samuel Lang Long Clemens, alias Mark Twain, launched a major lecture tour, The American Van de Lebrun, which recounted his adventures on the very first major pleasure cruise across the Atlantic in U.S. history. The performances were a rousing success. As part of that tour, Clemens, then 33-years-old, gave an evening lecture to a crowded house in Batavia 150 years ago on Tuesday, January 26, 1869. Unfortunately, the crowded house was not named, but it could have been the Revere House, which regularly accommodated large audiences for events, or the Assembly Hall in the West Side School, which was relatively new at that time, or Dorn's Hall on the third floor of the Dorn Block, which is on Batavia Avenue and is not the same building anymore, or any of several other gathering places. The short-lived Batavia Lecture Association sponsored the lecture, course that included Twain, who was then anticipating the publication of The Innocence Abroad in July 1869. I feel important to talk about the commonly-held yet erroneous belief that Clemens was not overly impressed with Batavia, solely because of an excerpt from a letter to his soon-to-be fiancee, Olivia Langdon, in which he said, "Today, this sad-looking village makes me feel ever so friendless and dreary." In fact, the balance of that sentence proves otherwise. He says, "And behold, the picture is so overflowing with friendliness and tries so hard to come out of the case to me that I grow contented and glad again, in spite of the sad village and its solemn surroundings. I wouldn't part with this picture for the world." He had just received a picture, a photograph, from his soon-to-be fiancee, and he was using contrast, a rhetorical device, to highlight and emphasize the difference between the so-called dreary surroundings, in this case, Batavia, but simply a coincidence of location, I think wherever he was, that would have been the sad village, and the light in his life, Olivia, represented by the photograph she recently sent him, in order to make his argument stronger and more memorable. So fast forward 150 years to 2019. Batavia Public Library has initiated a year-long collaborative, community-wide celebration in honor of the sesquicentenary of Samuel L. Clemens' visit to Batavia, and is working with other local agencies to produce activities to celebrate this milestone in Batavia history. That celebration began officially on January 22nd, when Mayor Shelkey officially proclaimed this year as the Year of Mark Twain in Batavia, and the library launched a month-long Mark Twain book display. We encourage you and everyone in Batavia to take photographs and selfies with Mark Twain and old Batavia at the library's entrance, with the Revere House as the photographic backdrop, and share the photographs on social media, as I said, with the hashtag Mark Twain in Batavia. The sculpture, by the way, commemorates Mark Twain's 1869 visit, was given by the Swanson family in honor of longtime library director Miriam H. Johnson. Again, pick up your very own mini Mark at the library or the Batavia Depot Museum, or at the Batavia Farmers Market on Saturday, July 13th during the Windmill City Festival, and post his adventures on social media. In collaboration with the Park District, enjoy a movie in the park on July 24th featuring the adventures of Mark Twain. The movie begins at 8:30 after the River Rhapsody Concert Series at the Batavia Riverwalk. And then, as I mentioned, on September 26th, the premiere event of the year is Mark Twain in Person at the Batavia Fine Arts Center. And tickets are on sale now online at bataviafindarccenter.org. On October 17th, books from Bites at the library features Barbara Kalina on The Innocence Abroad, Twain's very first novel, and the inspiration for his lecture in 1869. And finally, Stacy Peterson, the library's Adult Services Manager, will lead a book discussion of the adventures of Tom Sawyer at the library on November 12th. So I want to give kudos to the library's many community partners, who I named in this little presentation. Together, we make it happen for Batavia. So thank you very much. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You know, I would just offer up, and I don't know if I've given you this yet or not, George, when this whole thing came out, Jim Hansen was president of the Batavia Historical Society, and he got a call, which he referred to me down here at City Hall, from the University of California, who had inherited all of these Mark Twain letters and an inheritance, and they were preparing to do this book that they've now been published in, that we have a copy of it up in the library. And so I was interested in this, so I took it to our then-Assistant Fire Chief, Steve Lusted, who used to work at our fire department in his later days, and he was an avid railroad buff. And the book showed that Mark Twain was writing these letters every day to this gal, and the night before, he had written a letter in Marshall, Michigan, which is down on the south end of the main state, the main part of the Michigan area, just above South Bend, Indiana. It was not very far from South Bend. That's where he was the night before. And he got on a train and got to Batavia that same day. And so I asked Steve Lusted, as an avid railroad buff, could he go back in 1869 and trace the railroad lines, and was it possible for Mark Twain to get from Marshall, Michigan to Batavia in that day? And he instantly came up with the train, the route, the time, and everything else that he arrived, and he came down and he got off the train at what now was the depot over here, when it was over at Webster and South Van Beren Street. a partnership that not only displays that history for the public, but stores the knowledge at the museum's Custis and Research Center. Among the many benefits of membership in the society is a subscription to the Batavia Historian, which is a newsletter published four times a year. The Batavia Historian is, it features reports and news stories of the activities of the Historical Society and the Depot Museum, as well as scholarly research into Batavia's history, people, and events. This is the summer issue of the newsletter, which is appearing any day now in the mailboxes of nearly 400 members of the Batavia Historical Society and their families. This current issue features a story on the new curator of the Depot Museum, the summer intern at the museum. There is a report, very interesting, on the Year of Mark Twain by Batavia Public Library Director George Sheets. Thank you, George. There's a detailed story on the 50th anniversary of the Batavia Park District, which was founded in 1969. There's reports on the ongoing Depot Museum expansion campaign, and there is a fascinating story about Batavia's connection with the 1969 moon landing, written by none other than our mayor, Jeffrey D. Schulke. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The museum is located at 155 Houston Street, and is currently open for the season from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and from noon to 4:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday. I'm way ahead of you here, Mr. Mayor. The telephone number at the museum is (630) 406-5274. The email address for the editor of the newsletter is bataviahistorynews@gmail.com. Finally, the Batavia Historical Society will meet at 2:00 p.m. this Sunday, June 23rd, right here in this room, in the Batavia City Council Chambers. Carl Bruen of Batavia is going to be presenting a really exciting program on the 1893 Chicago World's Fair, the Great Colombian Exposition. You're all invited to attend. This would be the perfect opportunity for all of you to come down in familiar surroundings, see what the Historical Society is about, and for you to become members of the Historical Society. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, let me just elaborate a little bit on what Mark just said, because I should want to point this out to everybody in this room. We've got in the back wall back there, some pictures, or the next couple of days, we're going to be hanging out there. And one of them is a picture of Buzz Aldrin standing on the moon's surface. And what's unique about it is, if you look at the newsletter that we have here, this is the Batavia eighth grade class in 1917, and in almost the top row there, the second girl in is Marion Moon, who was the daughter of the Methodist minister, and she's the mother of Buzz Aldrin, who landed on the moon. And more interesting to that is the fact that when the astronauts came back from the moon landing, they wrote a book called First on the Moon in 1970, and they had somebody write it for them, but they all contributed comments to it. And on page 77 of that book, it tells the story about how the flexible fuel lines, which were used in that rocket, which moved both, I guess, electricity and fuel through the lines. It was a line that was made so, that was made so it wouldn't break despite all the crashing and shaking that was going to have, and the takeoffs and landings and everything it did. But that flexible fuel line was designed in the research laboratory of Dunbar Capel had a research division here called DK Aerospace. And DK Aerospace had a laboratory in which that fuel line was designed and manufactured, and all of us right now are sitting in that laboratory. So this is the room where the fuel line that landed on the moon was made, in this room where we are right now. So that's an interesting piece of Batavia history that not a lot of people know, but I guess after this gets published, a lot more people will know about it.
Well, thank you for writing the story and helping people know that. We do get a lot of contributors to the newsletter. George has contributed in the past, I know he's done some great research. I think some of you know John Dryden, he's done a lot of terrific stories in the past for the Batavia Historian. And if anybody has an idea, or better yet, would like to write a story for the Batavia Historian, you can reach me at bataviahistorynews@gmail.com, and I can use all the help I can get with this enterprise, and I sure appreciate it. Thank you.
I've got a couple more ideas for you. Okay, get through that. Moving then to item 17, which is Resolution 19-053, authorizing an IGA with the Batavia Park District for creek maintenance. Who's got this one?
It was back, I believe, in either March or April that we discussed this at a council meeting, and I believe now finally, the Park District has gotten through their process and everything, so now we're going to approve this intergovernmental agreement. Basically, it'll be, the city will be the lead for all engineering phases during construction and construction engineering services. And then the Park District will have 30 days for comments and approval or disapproval during the preliminary and final engineering phases. So trying to do this as a cooperative, intergovernmental agreement, so that we can work with the Park District where they have input, and their parks are located right next to some of the waterways that we're working on, starting off over in the first ward, so at Mahoney Creek. So really, that's the gist of this idea, and it does require an intergovernmental agreement between the two entities, the city and the Park District. Do we have any questions? I want to see if everybody remembers it.
I have just a quick comment, I mean, it's long time overdue, we needed it desperately, especially in that one location on Winter Green Terrace, and so I'm glad that it's finally coming to fruition. And, you know, obviously, hopefully, we'll be doing that with all our creeks that are running into the river, and doing a better job maintaining them.
This is the model for that, and I think it's something, you know, that we talked about when we started into this, and really, I think, you know, it's just taken time to get to this point, so I'm glad that we are moving forward with this. With that, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 19-53-R, authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement between the city of Batavia and the Batavia Park District for citywide creek maintenance.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by somebody over here, Alderman Malley, for the approval of ordinance 19-053. Any further discussion? Kirk, hold the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chanet.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to item 18, which is Resolution 19-071-R, authorizing execution of a contract for the 2019 street resurfacing and patching program with Geneva Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $561,329, which includes bid price plus a 3% contingency amount. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. Not to add more to the construction delays in town, but we are going to resurface a lot of streets this year. This program will have, leave a link on the city website, so that people will be able to see where it's occurring, and then they'll also get notification at their houses if they're going to be blocking any driveways or doing anything, as they do the street work. So we do it every year, and it is something that we are really lagging behind on, that we have to work diligently at, to try to expand and get as many of the streets done as we can. Any questions? I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 19-071-R, authorizing execution of the contract for the 2019 street resurfacing and patching program with Geneva Construction Company.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Rosato, for the approval of Resolution 19-071-R. Any discussion, further discussion? Kirk, hold the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to 20, which is Resolution 19-065-R, waiver bids for network storage system. Who's got this one? Alderman Chanet?
So the next two items, one, we do have to waive the formal bidding on this. We are upgrading data storage equipment, we have HP equipment that we're going to be purchasing. Pricing through the state of Illinois was not as good as going directly through HP, so we're going to award the contract there. So I would move that we waive bidding on the upgraded equipment for HP storage.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Chanet, second by Alderman Malley, for the waiver of bids on the network storage system. Any discussion? Kirk, hold the roll.
Chanet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to 20, which is Resolution 19-066-R, authorizing authorization to purchase network storage system. Alderman Chanet?
And the resolution calls for an amount not to exceed $110,029.38, and I would move that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanet, second by Alderman Meitzler, for the approval of Resolution 19-065-R.
66.
66, I'm sorry. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, I'd just like to make note that I think our IAS Department has done a really good job in being able to keep the system alive that they have now, and that we've made it as long as that we have. I do think that they do a really good job for the staff that they have, and the amount of equipment that they have to control and run and keep operating, so I'm very happy that they've got this far with it, and that we're, you know, getting into the next system that we have.
Well, I just want to say, you just took the words right out of my mouth, so I didn't have to say it, but I would also certainly share with the city council that, you know, our staff is so highly talented that we share ourselves with our neighbors to the north, specifically at Tricom. And there's a lot of the innovations that are done at Tricom that many other districts or cities don't have. So we have one of the best state-of-the-art 911 dispatching services around, largely thanks to the background and the backbone that our IT staff supplies to them, so we're spread out, and we're doing a lot of different stuff in a lot of different places, but, like you say, we have a golden nugget here with those guys. Any other discussion? Kirk, hold the roll.
Chanet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chanet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to 20, which is Resolution 19-066-R, authorizing authorization to purchase network storage system. Alderman Chanet?
And the resolution calls for an amount not to exceed $110,029.38, and I would move that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanet, second by Alderman Meitzler, for the approval of Resolution 19-065-R.
66.
66, I'm sorry. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, I'd just like to make note that I think our IAS Department has done a really good job in being able to keep the system alive that they have now, and that we've made it as long as that we have. I do think that they do a really good job for the staff that they have, and the amount of equipment that they have to control and run and keep operating, so I'm very happy that they've got this far with it, and that we're, you know, getting into the next system that we have.
Well, I just want to say, you just took the words right out of my mouth, so I didn't have to say it, but I would also certainly share with the city council that, you know, our staff is so highly talented that we share ourselves with our neighbors to the north, specifically at Tricom. And there's a lot of the innovations that are done at Tricom that many other districts or cities don't have. So we have one of the best state-of-the-art 911 dispatching services around, largely thanks to the background and the backbone that our IT staff supplies to them, so we're spread out, and we're doing a lot of different stuff in a lot of different places, but, like you say, we have a golden nugget here with those guys. Any other discussion? Kirk, hold the roll.
Chanet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Resolution 19-066-R is approved, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to 21, which is Resolution 19-072-R, authorizing Myers Controlled Power LLC to furnish 38 KV and 15 KV metal-clad switchgear for the Paramount Substation upgrade for an amount not to exceed $1,116,650. Alderman O'Brien, do you have this one?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Our Paramount Substation has two switchgears, one is 30 years old and it's at the end of life, the other is 18 years old. So this resolution is to upgrade the existing 18-year-old switchgear at the Paramount Substation. Myers Controlled Power will furnish and install the switchgear, and we have a few other things coming in after that. So I would make a motion, we pass Resolution 19-072-R, authorizing Myers Controlled Power LLC to furnish 38 KV and 15 KV metal-clad switchgear for the Paramount Substation upgrade for an amount not to exceed $1,116,650.
Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Knop, for the approval of Resolution 19-72-R, for the approval of the purchase of the switchgear for the Paramount Substation upgrade. Any further discussion?
Just want to make one comment on that, Your Honor, please. This here, we just did the Northeast Substation, which should be pretty much up and running by the end of the, end of the summer, and that is, that's an enclosed environment now to keep it protected from weather and from wildlife. This here, switchgear, will also have the same protections, and we're modeling this one after the one that we just did at the Northeast Substation. So it just keeps our electric utility vibrant and keeps redundancy.
Any other comments? Kirk, hold the roll then, and a motion?
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chanet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chanet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
throughout the community how much fun the new amenities that they have out there are. So definitely encourage people to get out there and enjoy that. That's not just an asset for the city of Batavia families, but just regionally, there's nothing like Funway. And this is a good time of year to enjoy it. The proposed Boca Ditos Restaurant, it's an Argentinian restaurant right here in our downtown, is nearing completion of construction, so we're hoping that's going to be, soon to be followed by a grand opening, as well as the proposed Oak and Swine Restaurant at one oh seventy Swilson. They have a full permit. Their facade removal has been completed, and their internal work is beginning. And then in Public Works, progress is continuing on the Deer Path and Main Project. The roadwork should be all completed by this fall, and then installation of the traffic signal equipment may actually be delayed until late fall because there's just such a huge lead time for that equipment at this point. Ward one drainage improvements were slowed by our wet weather that we had in May, but we're trying to make up time each day, and the project should be substantially completed, except for the restoration work, by mid-July. The electric crews are continuing to work on relocating on the Main Street in preparation for the complete road reconstruction project that we will be embarking on in 2020. And the forestry operations have begun over the last, the last few weeks with our new personnel that we have dedicated to performing that work. And just want to let you know that staff is hard at work on a reboot of our website, modernize it a little, put things where people expect them to be, make it a little user-friendly, clean it up a bit. I think we've got sometimes too much going on, on one page, so we look forward to presenting that reboot to you in about a month or so. It's in its substantially completed state at this point. In the month of July, at the Committee of the Whole meetings, the departments will be doing their mid-year reports, and as well, we will have the second quarter presentation on additional accomplishments that have been made on the strategic action plan. And last thing I'd ask is just, you know, with the storms coming, but everything's growing at an incredible rate, can we just make sure to keep those gutters clean so we can make sure that the water flows in the way that it's supposed to and not, definitely keep those grass clippings out of the road? I appreciate everyone's cooperation with that. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No questions, just a couple of remarks. A month ago, the woman, Jennifer, who was here from the, was it the ISA WWA, who was talking about water quality, the answer to the question, what were, what was, what was it scoring on? Taste, odor, and clarity.
Yes.
That's why Batavia water is so freaking amazing. Also, Mark left out of his presentation, cost. For just thirty dollars a year, a family could support the Batavia Historical Society, which I think is a bargain for the lifetime membership, which is only two hundred and fifty dollars, which is tax-deductible. And then as a follow-up on our presentation at the last meeting, thank you so much for reaching out to the county.
Yes.
Because it sounds like things are moving forward.
Yes.
With point-to-point. Thank you so much for that.
Sure thing. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Laura. Okay, we have committee reports. Alderman Chansett, do you have anything?
Nothing for city services, or government services.
Alderman Wolf?
Nothing for city services at this point. I just did want to let everybody know that I will not be here next Tuesday night for the COW meeting, and I will not be here for the first two COW meetings or city council meeting in July.
I think we've made a decision not to have a couple of those, right?
Not quite yet, but we already have multiple people who will not be present for July second, so that'll be.
But you're going to be here.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're at the, at the moment when we need to think about, you know, this is, it gets like, it gets like the December month, as you know, we try not to meet after the second council meeting for the rest of the year. You know, we need, probably should take the midterm break here for a couple of weeks as far as the committee meetings go, because I know several of you have talked to me, and I'm not putting anybody on the spot, but I know we're going to have quite a bit of absence here, so I think it's better, quite honestly, given the intensity and the importance of the subjects that we have coming before us, that all of us, as, as many of us as possible, try to be here for these meetings. So I think Laura and I are trying to get a handle on absentee rate that we may have for some of these meetings, so just to alert you, we may be putting out a memo to you suggesting that a couple of these not be held, and we just forestall it to the next week or whatever, given.
I've talked to Alderman O'Brien, who will be here to cover the COW meeting, so.
He'll be the mayor pro temp, then?
Yep.
All right, so we all know that. Let's see, who else? Alderman O'Brien, you have anything?
We have nothing to report.
And Alderman Callahan?
Nothing to report for community development. On Wednesday, there's a Plan Commission meeting. There are a couple of public hearings regarding some text amendments and some variances, and I see nothing scheduled for historic preservation on June twenty-fourth.
Okay. Do we have any other business? Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, I love to bring up, we had a lot of good conversation about some good things that are going on in the community, but one of the proudest things that I think we've been having some great discussions on recently are some of the harder topics, which are related to mental health, or addiction, or a lot of the other things that frankly, other communities just don't talk about, like we've started talking about. And for that, I'm really proud of what a lot of people are bringing to the table and their thoughts and opinions on that. In doing that, also getting a lot of feedback and discussions with people from the community about what it means to them, and some of the private conversations are very uplifting for us to have these conversations. We will not have some of the people come to us and tell their stories because of the stigma that's still attached to it, or because it is too painful for them. And for that reason, those stories I will share as they're out there, and the conversations, the points that people are making here are being heard loud and clear. And that's what people want to hear, that they're humans and they have a place in our community. For that, we're going to be discussing a lot of things that frankly, probably none of us ever thought we were going to be talking about, related to possible law changes, with needle exchanges, possible, the impacts of what does marijuana in our community mean? All these things that are going to be coming to our forefront, and it's a very emotional issue. One way to combat the emotional side of it is to do our research on it. And as a result of that, I was talking with somebody tonight that sat in this seat, or sat in these seats, and was kind of throwing out some terms that I thought were common every day. Pill mill, what those things mean, did not know the full extent of it, had an understanding, but it wasn't there. So if we don't know the terminology, we don't know the points of view on the layperson, it's going to be hard to really have those discussions that we're going to be. So I would kind of, if we're going to be having some meetings that aren't here, throw out some documentaries for people to watch, do some background research on it. I know Abby is great with giving us a lot of information, but I don't think you have this stuff, so reach out and start studying it. There's a PBS documentary, if you want to start there, Understanding the Opioid Crisis. That is ground one for, how did we get here? It's only been the last ten, fifteen years that it has gone completely haywire, and I'm sure the deputy chief can let you know some of the things, and thank you for reaching out to members of our community and having conversations with them. I appreciate it. Start watching those things, because there is always something that you might not know that people are going to bring to the table, and if you have an understanding of where they're coming from, it'll make the process of having these discussions much smoother. So, thank you all.
Anybody else?
You know, Your Honor, just on what Marty said, I, I think, you know, we as, as a body here, just the community really needs to work on the stigma for mental health. And then all these addictions and everything, it's all attached to mental health, and we really need to, to just erase that stigma. You know, if, if, if a high school child's parent has, has, has a mental health issue, they would much rather say, and have their parent have cancer, you know? And it's just, it's, it's, it's just a stigma. All these mental health issues are just diseases that can be, can be worked with. And so, to your point, Marty, absolutely, we, we, we need to work on that as, as a body here, as we go out into the community, and the community as a whole needs to work on that also, and, and discuss it, and, and erase that stigma.
Anybody else? Okay, I would just like to take a couple of minutes and share some experiences I've had in the past week. As you all know, I serve as the chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plannings Council of Mayors. And so last week, I was in Chicago two days. I was out of town. I was in both Tuesday and Thursday on the Eighth Floor at Willis Tower, and we had very involved meetings. I was asked to, one of five mayors in the region, to sit in a meeting with the governor's staff and discuss what is their plans and what's going on. I, I want to just make the observation that I was impressed with the governor's staff. I think they're, they're not real old folks, they're generally a younger group. I mean, I would say there probably wasn't anybody maybe in the room that was over forty years of age, but they were very enlightened and very in touch, and they seemed to have a very good understanding about what was going on. I will, I will tell you, I think the thing that was a bit, I don't know how to use the word troubling, but the, the thing that struck me was, is that, you know, they've got some ideas, and they were touting, you know, they've got this new income tax increase approved, and supposedly that's only going to top, affect people at the top end of the earning levels, but they're not sure how many of them are going to be there and how much money this is really going to bring in. They have enacted the gas tax, and then July first, that's going to increase everybody's price at the pump by nineteen cents a gallon, but that's, my opinion, that's a much-needed tax, because there's a whole backlog of, of roadwork. The one thing that's out there, though, is, is I will tell you, I am not convinced that there's a real strong answer easily for solving the state budget requests. The state is miserably behind in past bills. I'm led to believe that if you've got a bill, you're going to wait six to eight months for it to get paid, because there's so many people in line ahead of you to get their bills paid, and this revenue isn't coming in. And I think the one thing that some of the mayors and my, other mayors and myself that sat there and had this conversation, we were kind of looking at each other every now and then, is some of the other ideas that are now on the table, specifically where we're going with gambling and gaming in the state. You know, the whole sports betting thing, that's, seems to be, yet to fully be defined as to how that's going to work and how much money that's going to bring in. It seems to be opening up a whole new arena of gambling for us. The one that certainly, I think, catches our, our attention is the fact that we've now authorized, I, I don't know if we know for sure the exact number, six or seven new casinos in Illinois, and what that's going to do to the existing casinos that are already, there's four that already exist in Joliet, Aurora, Elgin, and Displanes. It would appear that that would be some drawdown on their business. And in the meantime, we also have, you know, a number of people wanting to do locally, localized video poker facilities. Now, I will tell you that I'm sitting here at my desk, and I've got three applications that are going to be coming to you here in the near term, of people wanting to enhance video gaming in Batavia. Among them is Berkeley's Grocery Store. And then we have another two that want to do cafe, video poker cafes, one downtown and one out on Randall Road. So we've got, that one's coming in under our ordinance, which you all participate, not all of you, but most of you participated in. Those are all conditional uses, and they've got to come in and talk to Scott, and then they've got to file paper, and then they've got to come in and put on their presentation to each and every one of you, and then you're going to have to vote on whether or not you're going to allow these to take place. The guy from Berkeley has called, has called me three times in the last two days wanting to talk about his, so I think they are anxious to get going. They want to do it right when you come in the door, they have a little lunch space right there by the, the Delcetessen, and that's where they want to set up. So those are all conversations we're going to have. The whole recreational marijuana was quite an enlightened discussion with us in the governor's office, and I've been almost in daily conversation with Chief Yule and his two deputies, and Chief Mazza's been in conversation with me several times. We've had already some instances. What was interesting is it was made, mentioned, you know, this thing was approved on a Friday two weeks ago, and by Friday night, it was all over the place, everybody was out smoking dope, because it's not even legal till the first of January, but it's going to be legal, so I guess everybody's taking it upon themselves, and I'm talking about all throughout the whole region this is going on. The one thing that seems to be a point of concern, and I know Chief Yule shares this with me, is, is that there seems to be a thing going here, and I think, I pick up on what Alderman Callahan just said about the need to have some dialogue at the community and in conversations about what's truly going on here, because I think there's an educational thing that needs to come out on that. And what, what I'm gleaming so far is, is that there are a number of individuals that once they go to a bar or a pub or a restaurant, and they have three or four drinks, and they consume that alcohol, and then they go out on the patio or the backyard, and they smoke a couple of marijuana cigarettes, there's a lot of people whose physical systems do not blend well with that. And we've already had some ambulance calls in our area where this has been already reported to us, and we've gone and, and had to deal with it, but as Chief Yule admitted to me the other day, he's afraid that, you know, we're going to have this happen, somebody's going to drink first and then the marijuana second, and then they're going to get in the car and drive, and then as they're driving, they're going to pass out. And that becomes a very, very problematic situation, where that car goes and what it does and doesn't do. And so I think that, you know, maybe beyond us, there may be other cities, because I know some other mayors are sharing in the concern about this, that we're going to have to have some education with people about, you know, do you know that you won't pass out if you do this? Because we've had some in Batavia to do it. Alderman Wolf and I had sat in on a meeting of the Tri-City Ambulance last Friday, and this got discussed, and some of our other public officials from our neighboring communities even brought it up and thought that it was going to be a major increase in business. I might add, as part of that, that last week at the Tri-City Ambulance meeting, we created a sixth ambulance that's going to start out part-time, it'll be based at the East Side, West Side Geneva Station, it'll be in the daytime only for the moment, but it'll probably will end up being full-time, because our ambulance loads and business is, is increasing at such a rate that we probably need to have a, we do need to have a sixth ambulance. There's no doubt about it in my mind. That is becoming a highly demanded service, and in our case in Batavia now with four, soon to be five, senior living communities, you only need to look at the Tricom app on a daily basis to see how many times we're responding to those facilities. So, I mean, that's, that's going on out there. So I think I gleaned from this meeting with the governor's staff that, you know, they're nice people, and they're trying to find their way through what they're trying to do here, but this money thing is still a big, open-ended question. And, you know, some people are already saying, well, gee, let's go get a grant, or whatever, and a lot of, I will tell you, there's a lot of non-belief amongst fellow mayors of my, and myself, that there aren't, at least for the moment, there aren't going to be any many grants to be had in Illinois for anything, because the money is so tight with the government, and it appears it's, it's going to be, so I wouldn't hold out our, our hopes for anything. Again, picking up on what Alderman Callahan just shared with you, I want to share with you the fact that I, this has been coming at me now for most of the, since the beginning of the year, and I will tell you that I am aware of at least a dozen, and I think it may be more, groups, individuals, agencies, who have been on the doorstep here inquiring about, will the city give me a grant or some support for something that we're doing? And some of these are very well-respected, well-known agencies that are, we're working with, our staffs are working with on a day-to-day basis. But like everything else, because the government's gotten so tight, they can't go to the state or federal government and get any federal money or state money of any magnitude anymore, so they're nosing around. So I've suggested to a bunch of them that, you know, and I guess at the end of the day, I'm going to contact everybody that I know has been in and talked to me, and say that, you know, in our budget process, as we begin the process here in a couple of months, I guess I'm going to suggest we probably should have a night and invite any of, and all of those people that want to come in here to come in and sit here and put on their pitch to you, and then you can have a decision as to whether or not you think we should be supporting any of these, because there's a big number of them out there now wanting us to step forward and help them. And a lot of it is names that are very common in this town on a day-to-day basis. Some of them are even our service clubs, and, you know, patriotic organizations, and there's just a whole bunch of folks that are in search of trying to come up with some support, and given the tightness of the dollar, I'm not so sure that there's much money to be given to anybody. But we've, we've got about a dozen out there that are right now asking if we're, and talking to the other cities around us, I'm hearing the same thing from them, so it's, we're not being picked on. This is just a bunch of well-deserved agencies are, are really scrounging around trying to find money, and you've probably read in the newspaper, we've had a couple of them announce their discontinuation of their services for the immediate future, because they just are not in a position to continue to operate. So all that stuff's out there, and it's, you know, I guess it's going to come to roost here one of these days, but, you know, we have to abide by our budget that was, all of you approved, not all of you again, but those of you on the council who approved it last year, we can't be going out and making up stuff as we go, so I would suggest that that's going to be, have to be one of the heavy concerns. And the final thing, I just would like to publicly make my pitch for, is, in picking up again with something that some of you have raised with me rather recently, I think in this coming budget for next year, that one of the things we should give very hard consideration to beginning to finance is an update of a traffic study for Batavia. We've got a lot of different moving parts here right now. You can see the reactions in the community with the Fabian Bridge half-shut down. You can hit continuously, if I go on the computer, there's always people talking about, well, why aren't, when are they ever going to start talking about building a bridge? I will tell you, that one, that scares me, I guess I would tell you, because it, from the fact that I think the number of, of a new bridge, if you wanted to build it now in Batavia, is big money. And I don't know where that big money is going to come from, other than Batavia's saying that they're going to be willing to support that or build it itself. But I think the day is coming when we're going to have to get it back on the table. I know some of you actively support this, and I think that we should have the conversation. It may take a couple of years for it to kind of flesh out, but I think the public would find some comfort in the fact that we are down here, beginning to bring some people in here to talk about stuff. You know, one of the things, I guess I'm thinking we need to do is, begin with, is take a look at the timing of all the traffic signals on Wilson Street. Are they short enough? Are they long enough? Should they be adjusted? You know, should we do longer times at different times of the day? There's a whole bunch of stuff that the staff can certainly advise us on, and, you know, I think that we, we really have to give some serious consideration. And the final thing I just want to tell you is, this has been probably, in my thirty-nine years here, this, these last few months have probably been as busy as I've ever seen it here. And I cannot say enough of positive response to the outstanding work that I've been seen, And I cannot say enough of positive response to the outstanding work that I've been seeing, being done by our staffs, and specifically our department heads, starting with Laura and all those in, all these departments that are there trying to do stuff. They, they go far beyond what you would expect. In many instances, there's no publicity or credit for it. And it's every, it's Public Works, it's police, it's fire, it's ESDA, it's the city administration, the people that work here in the office. I've seen some situations up in, like, utility bill paying upstairs in the last few weeks that have just been, some of it's been very disturbing, some of the behavior, some of the people have been in there, and some of the things have been tried, said, attempted, whatever you want to call it. And again, that staff rises to the occasion, keeps their cool, and deals with it best they can. And sometimes they've even had to get the police administration out of the office to come down there and deal with some people that really have stepped out of line, in my opinion. But we've, we really are blessed here to have the outstanding staff that we do, and I just want you all to hear it directly from me again and again, because it is a true fact, and it is happening. And we are very, very fortunate that we are served by those who are serving us. So with that, I will close down, and who's the motion maker? Alderman Wolf, motion for adjournment?